Is slightly up. Last year, at the beginning of the year, 2017, our little school was 107 students. This year it's 109 students. Last year, the high school was 140 students, and now it's 151. A combination of a couple of things. I just spoke of having a small senior class, and a small senior class leaves, and a larger freshman class comes in, obviously you're going to have greater numbers. We've had a little more in than help, but nothing, nothing much to say alarming on that. So our numbers are good, you know, 150 is, you know, historically where it's been a couple of years, 15, 20 years ago where you had a jump, but 151 is now higher than it's been probably by our services. That's great.
Our October 1 enrollment, it was a total of 149 students, eight of five who don't want to be our principal student in our enrollment. Last year was 158, so down nine. But as we sent 35 more students to the middle school, we have, you know, we have a 21 student kindergarten class, so we boosted them up and we'll just have to. Traditionally, what we've seen is that we have smaller kindergarten classes as they go through the grade levels, particularly third, fourth, fifth, we add more and more students. About what we've.
Questions or comments from the board regarding enrollment?
So of the 13 we gained in the high school, how many of those would be tuitioned in versus people who don't attend?
You would ask that. Sorry. Um, what did you? We have, um, we had, we had a few new ones this year, but it's hard, I don't have the exact number, the reason I have the exact number is some of them are new to us, but they're not new to the district because I had some new tuition students who were sixth graders but weren't in history class there. I do believe that taking those away, I had, we had three new tuition students.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thanks. Russ, did you want to add anything?
I do, we were just trying to help Sean get questions out. Sorry. No, good. Again, our enrollment continues to be steady. Again, I think that's a whole kindergarten numbers. We have kids that are tuitioning in, we have lots of kids tuitioning in, a number of 31 students right now are tuitioning in this year. That has been pretty consistent, somewhere between 26 and 30 vibrating through the last few years. The kids continue to want to come here, we have kids that move in and move out, trying to figure out what the numbers. But again, our enrollment is pretty consistent, and that's what we have projected, and I think that continues to hold true.
Should we be doing anything else to attract more tuitioned in students, or is there a...
Well, I think we're, we're doing what we can for those towns that have that ability to have school choice right now. Potentially if school choice becomes a little more available throughout our state, I think there's a lot more of that pool, a lot of schools are fully doing. Some of that speaks for itself, when you go back and look at our SAT schools, Mr. Fred talked about a lot of participation, extra participation, but definitely we would be a lot more competitive for those students if everyone would stay in that school choice. Something we'd have to look at at that time.
Thank you.
Comments? Thank you. Um, SCES Facility Committee, so Jim, I'll give a quick review and then I will jump in at any point.
Okay.
So we met on September 10th. Review of the project and the drivers going forward with the non-compliance list and the pressure from that. Good attendance, good discussion. We had a helpful suggestion after this meeting from John Augustine, but what we've done is we tried to give you a snapshot, as we get information, we try to give you a snapshot of what is driving this, which I'll talk about more in a minute. When the information then leaves, John's suggestion was great, is that we had a slide from when we first got an estimate of what the potential numbers would be for the least expensive project, and they were part of a slide deck, we were explaining it, it had context, but we're sharing everything that we get when we put the slides up. We didn't give enough information to have it stand alone, so one of the things we'll work on for our next update, so I appreciated the feedback. Because when you're looking at it, there isn't context. So originally, when we were giving the PowerPoint, it was fine, as a standalone document, if I hand it to you, you don't have enough to go on. So now we have better numbers, and we're going to take John's suggestion and get that so it can be a standalone document, it will be more accurate, so I appreciated that. There's different discussion in the community. I certainly have heard a lot of, all of them passionate feedback. What, maybe I haven't said it quite this way before, the reality is, we, the subcommittee is bringing forward something that we are well aware has a huge price tag and a huge impact on our taxpayers. We don't have building aid where the $10 million, $10 million, $78,000, 2006 effort had a third of building aid, so it would have been $7 million. This is an enormously expensive project, we're trying to have a productive conversation with the community, we totally understand the reactions we're having. It's a bigger discussion in that this building has a limited amount of time that we can use it. We have, we've had help from fire and safety, some tolerance from ADA, Homeland, other things, we've provided the nine pages of time and cram. But just to simplify the challenge before us, it's been known for years in the community that this building needs to be addressed. The quality of the, the building for educating our elementary school kids needs to be addressed. It's not a new conversation. The longer we wait, the more it gets expensive, as is shown from 2006 effort to now. We hope to have a productive exchange, and we're very receptive to the different pushback and challenges, that's what makes democracy great, we understand that. The reality, when we step away from all the details that we have shared, is that this has a limited shelf life. At some point, as other communities have experienced, there's going to be a fall where we don't get to open it. We're not saying that's next fall, we're not, we're trying to get better information so we can share more and more as we learn more, but when we start to deal with wires sticking out of the wall, some of the original plumbing that's 90 years old, you can't just touch part of it. It unleashes a need, a requirement to update everything. So all of this is a, we tried to go factual, the reality is, if we don't address the facility for our elementary school, then one of the options is going to be, we don't have one anymore in town. At the meeting and other people talking to me have asked about consolidation, have we considered that, have we studied it? No, but if we don't get this building passed, that's one of the, on the shortlist of options that we have to consider. So I want to give the message frankly, respectfully, but if we need to address those shortcomings, and to do so, from the two to three options that we have with limited space, they're, they started expensive and they go up from there, and we recognize that that is stressful for our taxpayers, it's stressful for us as taxpayers to consider, but we want to make sure that it's not just this discussion right now and going towards March. The larger issue really is, as a community, we need to decide if we want to continue to educate our kids here. And if there's a hindrance to that, if in the years ahead, this building no longer gets permitted to do that. So we have a looming potential significant change in our community. And I listen to all the feedback, I respect it, I read your emails, I think about them, and I understand the position on the school consolidation, maybe joining a regional school to send our kids out of town. I understand and respect that. For our family, we moved here for the school, and most of the families I know moved here for the school, so there's a pressure on the taxpayer to pay for the new facility. There's a fundamental change in the community if we don't educate our kids here. So there's no way, there's no way where the subcommittee can turn and come back to you with a bucket of sunshine and hope. There's just, this is a hard conversation for us to have. So we need to address it because there's a limited amount of time we can use this building, and I just want the community to understand, that's the end game. The end game is, if Dan had given a, Dan from Airman had given an example at the, at the meeting where there's a fall, I forgot the unity, that they said, no, you can't use the building, it doesn't pass. So there are fewer students in New England, to which the enrollment is not at our peak. We're in a, in a phase of steadiness, there's different opinions about NEZDEP and that mechanism that we use in New England school boards. Whether or not we're at peak enrollment from prior years, we still have a lot of kids, and we have projections that we're going to stay steady. We have a very successful school. You look at the test results delivered, the SAT scores, they're double digits above the state average when the state does well. We have something very, very special here, but it has an expiration date when it comes to the elementary school. So we're trying to do our best to share everything, the drivers, the cost, the considerations, and so that the voters can have a good understanding as we move towards, you know, what we're going to propose to the, Jim and I and the subcommittee are going to propose to the larger board for a valid art, warrant article for the March ballot. But I'm hoping, whether you agree with it or not, whether you see it very differently, that that's fine. As a community, we have a pretty big decision coming to being able to educate our kids in town. That's what the reality is that we're looking at. So I don't, I wouldn't want to follow what I just said, but do you have anything on that?
The only thing I'll say is, I don't want to talk like consolidation, but that's an unknown number, nobody knows what that is, that's just, that's, that's unknown, nobody knows if it's less or if it's more than where we're at. What I will say is, we moved here as well for the school. The school, the school does very well here, our kids do very well. We can look back and say maybe what could have been done in the past, the past is the past. What I know is, when I raised my hand and I said that I would be on this subcommittee, we had all the information, we've put it together, and we're doing the best that we can and be as transparent as we can in trying to move something forward. We can't look back and say, well, we could have did this, or we could have did that. What we have to do is deal with what we have right here, and what's best for, for our children's education, the safety and the community. And I said it before, and I'm still excited about doing it, it is fun, it is fun putting this stuff together and working with people. John, thanks for your input and, and the community's input that, that we get, because it's good, that's what it's all about. It's not just about us up here, it's about the teachers, it's about the children, it's about the, the folks in the community. I like that stuff, so. I mean, not as long as yours, but that's.
Yes.
That's what's on my, that's what's on my mind.
Yeah, we had a good, a good conversation with the select board.
Yeah, that was good.
About potentials for the road and some specific things to look at, they asked, there was a great.
And once again, that's just communication, that's communicating with the folks that we need to communicate with, the partnership, a community, and that's what it's, that's what it's built on.
Yep.
That's what's important.
Yep, we'll be with the planning board, I think it's next Thursday night, and then on the 24th, we'll have the next committee meeting here. I think we, I didn't do a head count on the one on the 10th, but I think it was about 35, 40 people. Good attendance, expect more, so if you can, within your networks, we try to do what we can with the paper and Facebook and everything else, within your networks, if you can let people know 5:30 on the 24th here. Some people have mentioned wanting to see the school, it's one thing to come in here, but maybe to get shown around, so we're going to incorporate, meet that request and incorporate a tour, see if we can get SignBlaze up or one of the kids to do it, so you're not hearing our voices too much on this. And then we're going to have, what's it, Amy?
Amy Clark.
Amy Clark, from the Department of Education is going to be here to share some insight on schools inadequacy and the like.
Can I answer a number, as you were speaking, I will try to do a little bit of that. So that's where we're in, we're in Kearside Regional School District.
Yeah.
And their tuition is roughly $17,000. And our 151 kids, it's about $2 million a year. Over 25 years is $66 million. So just some real rough, rough numbers, so when you're looking at, again, a bond to, to a regional agreement where potentially you give up your rights at the time because you're not letting in, just, you asked for a number, right, as well?
Yeah, they, we're going to get farther into more of the numbers. Chris had asked me the questions about, you know, is this hard cost, is this accounting for interest? We're not, we're, we've got to get through some steps to that, so we're going to have much more of that kind of conversation as we settle on, for sure, getting the pricing. We had some pricing questions about, there's a slight discrepancy, but we're giving you what we have, basically, real time. So we're going to get to those conversations, and there's going to be, I'm sure, fascinating and engaging variety of ways to look at the same thing from several different points, and we'll consider those. We're just not to that point to get into those, those details, and that's, that's a helpful way to look at it. Yeah.
Can we just make sure also that in those conversations, we're talking about students?
Right.
So I know that numbers play a big part of this, but students is what your priority.
That's what the board's here for.
And the safety of those students and educating those students in appropriate space, making sure that those students do what it is they need to do for 20% of the year. We might have a little one page or some other policy.
Yeah. To sum, to summarize this message, so we're bringing you an unpopular, expensive message. We acknowledge that, we're trying to do this carefully, respectfully, but this is what we do. The board, our, our priority is the, the education of our students, and that includes the safe environment, so we need, that's what elected us to do, and that's what we're, we need to focus on. So appreciate the support, the questions, the challenges, it'll, and we'll have more discussions, but again, the 24th is the next committee meeting, so there's, there'll be more to share at that point. Any, any other comments, questions?
I'm good.
Good. All right, manifests. I'll be accepting a motion for the, I think it's cleaner to do the AP manifest and then a second motion for the payroll manifest. So can I get a motion to approve the AP manifest?
I'll make a motion to approve the AP manifests 2009-05 and 2019-06.
Thank you, Scott, the second?
Second.
Second by Brian. All in favor of accepting the AP manifest?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the payroll manifest?
I'm going to make a motion.
Do them all.
Make a motion for the payroll manifest 2019-05, 2019-06.
And, and the, uh, 5.1.
Then 2019-05.1.
All right. Thank you, Jim. That was added on the second. All in favor of accepting the, approving the payroll manifest, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, we have public forum. Again, this is 15 minutes, three minutes a person. I'm just checking, if I look at my watch, I didn't even throw you off, I wasn't meaning to be disrespectful, I just want to be reasonable, so if there's lots of voices, they get to be heard. So if you understand, if you have comment, please do.
The stuff that you guys are looking at, I'll sit here and wonder what you're looking at, is that public information, so if someone were to make their way to know it, but after the meeting, maybe you would get that information? Okay, so I would suggest, as the selectmen do, just pass it out, I don't know, pass it out, but the selectmen do is they act it to the agenda for the line, and it's great because it, it makes us more informed, more, better listeners, it makes them need to be more interested. Just a suggestion, the selectmen only can do it for two or three months, but it's made a huge, great difference.
Thank you, Don. Reminder to folks, this isn't a, just, we'll go to you next, just with, I did, probably should remind everybody of the ground rules, but this isn't set up as a Q and A, because we need to be able to hear from the public, and any of us can't answer because it's, it's a position of answering to the board, which none of us are allowed to do, so we just want to set your expectations, if for anybody who hasn't been here before, that's why we've put a lot of work in last year with the, the guidelines for this, and so you get to ask the questions, we just, the way that this works is we can't, it's not a Q and A, so just so people understand. John?
I'd like to just talk a little about some of the school projects, the, the buildings of the school, I didn't answer all of them, but you guys right here are elected by majority to commit that activity. You've somehow come forward with plans, basically you were fair and like a budget passed in the schools in this unit, and that's really one of your tasks, you have four other ones I'm not going to mention, all of it. Back there, and also bring forward CPI, the movement program, anything that really hits that radar, and what hits the radar at the end of the school. You're up here today through the process because majority of the community, I think, which one place to work on doing something with its elementary school. So don't feel that it's a burden, feel that it's, I guess I embrace it because it is something that majority of the town, I think, wants to happen. I think it needs to happen, we talked about it, I mean, I was on the board quite some time before, and the whole time we're doing it, we went, we went through the same thing, but now you're right, it's at that time. Unity, I think they shot themselves in the foot because they brought people in and said, they went backwards, they said, okay, these are problems, and they had people looking at it and actually red, and red flags, to the point that they couldn't run the school. We're not in that shape, we can run the school, but we also need to tend the school. But that's the reason why you're here right now. I'll be able to leave it on this board to just side by and so on on the school here. So that's just one topic. Next topic is, over the, the, the middle high school, and look at all the grounded classes. There were five schools here in Sunape one time, then it went down to one, then it went down to this one, then it went down to two. So growth happened, we know the growth went, we know it went down, and now we have a good idea that it's going to basically stay the way it is. So this community and this board has to figure out how to keep the school running. Every town has the same problem. National, Manchester, everybody has the same problem, so it's not like we're funding a program that is just outrageous. We have a late campus, we have people off late to help us, but balance of those two work, and that's what Sunape is all about. And we need to keep this ship afloat, and I think you can do it, the community can do it. Throw programs out there, throw ideas out there, it's going to work, but Sunape needs the schools, and that's the way it is, that's what our fathers want.
Thank you. Other questions, Chris?
Couple things, three vocal topics. And announced costs, and, you know, very frustrating, it didn't seem, didn't seem like we were able to act a cost to it. So it seems like we may want some support from these debtors, so I'll wait for that to happen. But I moved here 2001, 2003 bought a house, 2003 moved, moved to the S U. We still had a non-interest, no supply, right here, right? Now we have an S U. That's S U, because our S U doubled the cost per child educated. Okay, costs, educating children here is trying to get high, and yet, as we're seeing reduction in enrollment, reduction in teachers is not following suit. And I think what we're doing is we're sacrificing teachers for perhaps education for administration. So teachers, in my opinion, mainly, the school, not administration. Are we sacrificing education for children for administration?
Thank you. John, please.
John, I was going to stage for, to separate comments, the first is on the school proposal. Everything I've heard so far is that the taxpayer is the primary funder, and I understand that. What I haven't heard yet, what I'd like to hear as the conversation goes forward, is what, if anything, the other stakeholders are willing to put forward. So the teachers' union has said they are supportive of it, but I have not heard what they're going to offer up to make it more financially feasible to the taxpayers. I've heard the administration is for it, but I have not heard what the administration is willing to offer up to make it more feasible for the taxpayers. And I've heard that the parents of many of the students are for it, but I have not heard what the PTO is willing to offer up to make it more feasible for the students. And I think that if all the various stakeholders, teachers, administrators, parents of students, and taxpayers, all are going to pitch in and help, then it's more likely to both to pass and would be, you know, a lower cost. So as you enter into the budget discussions, both the annual operating budget and the teachers' negotiation sessions, I'd ask you to keep in your mind, you know, what cost concessions or budget concessions or wage freezes, are these other groups going to be willing to put forward, just so they're contributing something to the overall effort? That's one. So separate, cut me off, I ran a talk, just want to talk about the test scores part. And I don't have the date in front because we weren't given it, but if, if we're looking at truly Sunape total population and the state average total population, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, because there's, there are historically sub-demographic groups that just do not test well, and it's just a statistical fact, it's not a value judgment on the subgroupings, for example, students who are not white in terms of ethnicity, students who do not have English as a first language, students who are economically disadvantaged as designated by free reduced lunch, or students who are designated as special education. So if Sunape has very small populations of those demographics that do not test historically well compared to Portsmouth, Nashville, Manchester, Concord, et cetera, et cetera, then comparing the total average and total average i- is not really a fair comparison. And that might have been what Mr. Moynihan was alluding to, is we should, as a district, test better than others, but I don't know. But I think we should, because if you, if you ask, you know, what is Sunape's non-white student population, it's probably less than 1% compared to all these other districts that have larger percentages. So I would encourage you as board to ask to see the apples-to-apples comparisons, meaning take the state data that only includes the population that looks like Sunape, and then do those comparisons. Okay. Because I think if, as a board, you should do that, and as parents, you should do that, because if, if people walk around thinking that the Sunape students are so much more, so much better at testing than the average student, but then when they go to apply for college or apply for scholarship, they're not competing against the average student, they're competing against the student that looks like them, and I think you're just doing a disservice by, by not.
John?
Doing the apples-to-apples.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments. Seeing no others moving, we're going to close public forum. Agenda items for next meeting, we're going to have an update on our budget. Let me go back in. We'll have a couple things, let me see, we'll have a minor update on the budget, and outlook towards the Budget Advisory Committee. We'll have a fairly significant update on the, the Subcommittee for the Building. Those are the two that jumped out, is probably the biggest, particularly the Subcommittee. Other things you want to?
You have two policies, and I will get you a present.
Okay, two policies. A lot of policies. All right, so pretty, likely a pretty straightforward agenda for next. So we're good there. Item 15, we, let me get my form. Non-public session, we need to go into non-public for the, I need a motion, if I can get this, we're going to be going on the last one, 91-A2IC, consultation with legal counsel.
I need a motion, we're going to go into non-public.
I need a motion, I'm going to go into non-public session under ninety-one dash A subsection two one C, consultation with legal counsel.
Okay, motion by Brian and Ozed, okay, all in favor? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, this is the second time I've done this, okay, roll call, starting with Ted Anderson.
Aye.
James Barella.
Aye.
Brian Garland.
Aye.
Scott Rissman.
Aye.
Jesse Tyler, aye, so we are going to go into non-public and adjourn from there, so this closes the public meeting, and we will go forward from there, thank you very much, the attendance, the questions, the challenges, and the discourse, have a good evening.